Our varsity baseball team participated in the quarterfinals at Spalding High School in Rochester, New Hampshire. Very close game. Unfortunately, we lost by one run in the seventh inning. It was a tough game. Our sports awards night was held on Monday, June 6th, at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. Our fall sports info night was held on June 14th at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. On the weekend of Friday, June 10th, Saturday, June 11th, and Sunday, June 12th, I attended the HOBE seminar, Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar, in Ringe, New Hampshire, on the Franklin Pierce College campus. It's a seminar to show how leadership sophomores, our soph- sophomores are elected through each school in New Hampshire to attend the HOBE seminar. And it works with leadership and education through the weekend. And as a part of it, you then become part of the alumni and are required to do 100 hours of community service if you keep up with it. And we will be having a reunion in August, on August 7th.
Lot of work.
Yeah.
And an honor.
And an honor.
Absolutely.
Our exams are held this June 16th, 17th, 20th, and 21st, and our last day of school is on the 21st.
Great. Anyone have any questions for James? Wonderful. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
So now, why don't we move to the update on the community forum?
I just wanted to report to last night's forum on the issue of childhood abuse. I felt, it was very, first of all, it was very well attended. We had approximately 65 community people in attendance. We had a wonderful presentation. Our Chief of Police, Kevin Seer, Director of Recreation, Jim Hilton, Tom Pavelidis, Director of Guidance at the high school, and Diane Lavoy from the Portsmouth SAS Group, Sexual Assault Support Services, were present. They gave a very brief presentation relative to the tragic situation that occurred in New Market and reported to the community the supports that have been provided to students. Obviously, Chief Seer updated us on the arrest and later on, the issues that have since occurred. And parents had a chance to ask questions and kind of process through this whole event. We tried to reassure the families that, of New Market, that we are open in the summer and that if issues arise at home or they have some concerns or questions, to please contact us. There's personnel that can, you know, support them. But I felt that it went very well. If need be, and as we go through this process with an impending trial and so forth, that if there's need, and there may very well be, that we would continue to have other evening events to support our families in New Market. So I do appreciate the support and the help from everyone. Very pleased with, it's really been a community effort, all of us working together to try to work through this.
It has been very good to see how the community has pulled together through this. Okay, committee reports. CECO School of Technology, Mr. Jablonski?
Okay. The CECO School of Technology Renovation Program Committee did meet June 8th. It is a committee of 20 members from schools such as Epping, Exeter, New Market, Raymond, Sandburn, also from the community and students. Also SST was represented. The committee did tour the facility and a map, and a list of the center programs were distributed. Members discussed space needs, not only for new and expanded programs, but also for academic and extended day programs. SST needs to request needed space soon to allow a variety of delivery systems, new models, senior programs, more sophomores, math and English, and other requirements to enable access and flexibility for students. Project Lead the Way, which was approved by the governing board, is a necessity and must be included in the renovation plan of the center. This September, Winnicott will be offering the first foundation course with 86 students, which will, which will add, which will actually be the prerequisite to the program Lead the Way, which is a pre-engineering program. The committee needs to explore the best delivery system for the center. Representatives from each school need to determine if they will offer foundation courses at their school or expect SST2, in addition to advanced level courses. An advisory committee must be formed for each new program recommended. This, of course, is going to be, has to be turned in by December of this year. And it's a program, it's a program committee where the programs will be formulated to pre, to pre the facility's renovation program. So there'll be another committee as soon as this committee gets through in December to formulate what type of classrooms you'll need, how much renovation you'll be using, let's say, for example, the collision, automotive collision section, which is overcrowded, automotive body, animal science, computer programming, and biotech, and goes on and on and on. But this committee is going to be the committee that's going to determine what is going to be expanded at that center. And with now approaching over 400 students, we're going to have to, and it keeps growing every year, we're going to have to start doing some thinking in New Market in terms of whether we're going to get this foundation requirement that, for the students to go through the center after this renovation is done. So we have to start thinking about that now. So hopefully, we're going to be, Mrs. Murphy and myself will be getting sheets out. We're talking about the eighth grade students, which are going to be surveyed, ninth and 10th grade students. We're also going to survey the seniors, see what their thoughts have been, what they did at the center themselves. Also, parents, we're trying to find some time to survey the parents for these necessary programs.
Can I just, so these prerequisite courses, are they just for the, just for the pre-engineering? Or is it, or is it for all, all SST classes?
No. It will just be for the pre-engineering class.
At this point, at this time, yeah.
At this point.
Okay. So is the SST considering offering those prerequisite courses themselves? Or is it really, or is the burden at this point really placed upon each, each attending town?
They're waiting for us to make that decision. There is also a 50/50 funding with the state. So if we decide we're going to prepare our students, then we'll get that type of funding. If we don't, then we're going to expect SST to do it, then they'll get the funding. You have, I guess you have to renovate classrooms to prepare these students for this delivery system for the SST.
The difficulty will be, obviously, New Market's size is small, as you compare to Winnicott. Now, Winnicott's going to have those pre-classes, this pre-engineering classes, the fundamentals, because they have a large high school and they can offer that. And they, as you heard tonight, Chet said they had 84 students.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. In New Market, 86 is the entire class. So there may be that we have to use SST to provide that fundamental to the pre-engineering classes. So we're going to have to survey the youngsters and, as Chet indicated, and once we get a handle on that, then we can make some recommendations to SST governing board and to the program committee.
And also, if we do decide to let SST do that pre-engineering foundation material, then we'll be probably sending sophomores to Exeter to take these classes.
Thank you. School Facilities Committee, Chris?
Yeah. I apologize in advance, this is going to take a little while. A lot of information here. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions. Dan Bissin from Team Design is here to answer all the questions I can't answer, which is all of them. So the School Facilities Committee has come back with a recommendation to the school board, and that's what I'm here to deliver tonight. Chris Power, the chair of the committee, was supposed to be here, but he's out of town on business. So since then, the school board rep, it falls to me. After, got to be more than a year now of effort, meeting at least once a month, going through the program analysis, the engineering, architectural analysis of the building, survey of the community, lots of formal and informal input and analysis from the administration, the formulation of the educational specifications, which is really kind of like the guts and the heart and the soul of the analysis that we do. And a lot of hard work on the part of a lot of people, including the administration and the staff of the people in the schools and many members of the community and Dan and his team. We've formulated this recommendation for you. What I'm going to do, to give you an overview of what this is going to be, is we have a 10-part recommendation. It's a comprehensive recommendation. You've seen it. It is on the internet at www.nuemarketwins.org. I posted it verbatim to the discussion board there yesterday, so people can run over to their computers now and take a peek at it if they want to. So I'm going to talk about what the recommendation is, going to talk about the pros and cons and how we achieved that determination, then start talking about, in the context of doing that, start talking about some of these drawings that are up on the board. And then Dan can come in at the end and fill in any blanks that I've left. So the recommendation is as follows. Number one, that the school board take immediate steps to design and construct an entirely new school facility for grades five to 12. That is option five, and we'll talk about what that is in a minute. Number two, that the school board take immediate steps to purchase the land necessary to accomplish recommendation number one and to accomplish other public purposes as appropriate, having in mind their ball fields for community use. Number three, that the school board immediately take steps to evaluate, select, and retain a professional design team to facilitate the accomplishment of the recommendations outlined herein, including, without limitation, taking all steps necessary to secure state building aid, as well as all other necessary regulatory approvals. Number four, that the school board reconstitute the School Facilities Advisory Committee as a School Facilities Design Committee, authorize to form task forces and/or subcommittees, work with the professional design team, facilitate public input, and make further recommendations to the school board regarding the design and construction of the facility outlined in recommendation number one. Number five, that the school board immediately evaluate the availability of funding, including, without limitation, existing capital accounts, impact fees, grants, or other sources necessary to accomplish the recommendations outlined herein and to take all steps necessary to make those funds available to implement these recommendations. Number six, that the school board continue to pursue discussions with other school districts regarding the possibility of out-of-district students tuitioning into the New Market School District on such terms and conditions as the school board may deem appropriate. Number seven, that the school board authorize the creation of a separate elementary school master plan committee to evaluate and make recommendations regarding the short, mid, and long-term site facilities and program needs of New Market Elementary School. Number eight, that the school board immediately authorize the creation of a junior, senior high school facility task force to evaluate potential reuses of the current junior, senior high school facility and site and invite the town council, the New Market Community Development Corporation, the New Market Business Association, community members, and any other appropriate constituency groups to participate as members. Number nine, that the school board adopt the final report and recommendation of the School Facilities Advisory Committee. And number 10, that the school board take all other steps necessary or appropriate to accomplish the recommendations outlined herein. The final report and recommendation of the advisory committee should be before the school board in about a month. Until we had the final recommendation, we couldn't really finish it off. What you're going to get in the final package is a 15 to 20-page report that summarizes all the work we've done and the analysis we've undertaken and has attached to it what's going to add up to a quite voluminous number of exhibits, documents, appendices that show you how each of those accomplishments was achieved. I've been around town for about five years, which is longer than some, not as long as others. When I say around town, I mean involved in town affairs. I think it's fair to say this is the most comprehensive piece of due diligence I've ever seen this town undertake. So the core of the recommendations, obviously, is to, is the design and construction of an entirely new school facility. How do we achieve that as our core recommendation? You have in front of you, and this will hopefully be posted to the school district website and to the New Market Wins website in the near future, a comprehensive spreadsheet. People on TV can't read it, but this is the five options, the five sort of core options that we considered. This is a list of the pros for each option. We sat down and kind of brainstormed this, and then we ended up forming a series, five subcommittees. Each subcommittee assigned to one of these recommendations to flesh it out as much as possible, and we all came back together and went over all those jointly. So this spreadsheet that you see here is the product of many hours of work in and of itself, because we wanted to give the community the fullest and fairest understanding of why we achieved the recommendation we achieved. The first option we considered is to do nothing, to leave the facility the way it is and carry on as we have been carrying on for some period of time now. The oldest part of the facility goes back to 1924, and it achieved its current configuration in 1987, so since at least 1987. The, I won't read through all of these. The major benefit of doing that is, of course, it's the least expensive in terms of capital cost. Keeps your school near the downtown and allows you, when the, when the bonds on the elementary school and the cross-gymnasium expire, you will see a benefit to the tax rate if you do nothing. The cons of doing nothing, hopefully you can get an idea, the list of cons is longer than the list of pros. You all remember, I hope, the drawings that we had posted that had all the colors on it, and everywhere there was a color, there was a deficiency. Those, that doesn't go away. That continues to become more and more, have an increasingly large impact on our ability to deliver curriculum and on our programs if you do nothing about it. The existing facility is non-compliant with ADA accessibility standards, with many ADA accessibility standards, and that's not going to change. The existing facility has very limited capacity, if any, to absorb future growth. Ideally, a school facility will be at around 80% of its total capacity. Dan is nodding at me. I think our current facility is at 94, 95% of current capacity. We analyzed those numbers, and so that leaves us very, very little flexibility, very little ability to absorb additional population, and certainly no ability to bring in students from other school districts to try to help us with our cost of education per pupil. The spaces that we have are very much outdated in terms of their mechanical systems, and especially in the older parts of the building. Electrical distribution and plumbing are very serious issues for us. Those concerns would remain unaddressed, and that's one of the big cons. The operating costs that we experience are relatively high. We know for a fact on the school board that there are several occasions upon which we had to have people come in to patch the roof, to work on our heating and cooling and plumbing systems, simply because they are outmoded and fail frequently and require a great deal of maintenance and are not particularly energy efficient. Several of those mechanical systems are also simply past or rapidly approaching their useful life. There's absolutely no possibility of ourselves getting accredited by any independent accrediting agency. To the extent you think that's a good idea, that will not happen in the existing facility. One of the major issues that came up in the community survey is the intermingling of high school and middle school kids. If we do nothing, that is not addressed at all, and that, to the extent that you believe that that is a bad situation, that would persist. The existing facility, obviously, we have a dire need for playing fields. There's no way to do that. Add more fields in or around the vicinity of the facility as it stands, and we have no auditorium and no, and if you do nothing, you don't get an auditorium, and many people think that's a good idea. The cost of doing nothing is easy to figure out. At some point in the future, you have to replace that facility. It's going to fall down. At some point, you're simply going to be forced to do it. Figure out what that cost is in today's dollars, add 5% per year, and multiply that by the number of years you intend to do nothing, and that's your cost of doing nothing. And I hope that makes sense to everybody. I'm going to skip option two for a second and come back to that briefly, because option two is a subset of option three. And if option three fails, then option two necessarily fails. Option two is to proceed with the renovations, the additions that were initially conceptualized back in 1997, which is to add four or eight classrooms onto the western side, the middle school side of the building, going out into the parking lot. Option three is, incorporates option two and then does additional things on top of that. Option three is a complete renovation and/or rebuilding of the current facility on the current site for both the middle school and the high school. That is what is over here. I hope people can continue to hear me and see what these drawings are. I'm going to refer to the bottom drawing first, because this is the main floor of the, of what option three would look like if you attempted to, if you attempted to continue with the current programs on the current site. You may be able to see a very heavy line that runs roughly through the middle of this building. To the left of this line is, the old section of the building would be torn down. That would be removing the 1924 section and the 1952 section, which includes the library and the music room, would be removed. They would have to be removed because they simply cannot be worked with to meet current educational standards, current, current program requirements. And if I'm saying anything wrong, thank you, Dan. Basically, what Team Design tried to do here is take this old section of the building and turn it into a middle school. Take the old section, tear it down, and build a middle school here. So you have a middle school pod set up here with five classrooms and a common area. You have an art space that has no exposure to outside light, music room, musical instrument space, what does that say? Oh, yes, family and consumer science and administration spaces. Then you take, the existing middle school section would remain, you would add on to it, and this is part of what the option two concept was, and you would take, make this the high school section upstairs and downstairs. And then on the second floor, again, you have your two middle school pods, your library on the second floor, and then your high school section down on this end. If you take a good look at this plan, the sections that are in yellow are the hallways and sort of the common areas. And you can see that the way this plan would flow, you would still have your high school students walking through the middle, middle school section of the building to get to the art class, to the gymnasium. It's not an ideal flow and does not accomplish the separation between the middle school and the high school students that the community has told us that they would like to see. The primary problem with this plan is that it does not meet our program requirements. There is no room on this footprint, and I should stop and say that the middle school section actually goes out to the property line on the eastern side of the building, so that access road is eliminated, which is probably, the fire chief would probably have something.
The road can stay.
I'm sorry, the road can stay?
Yeah.
My mistake. But there's no room in this footprint for industrial arts, business labs, special education, life skills classroom, or alternate education. There's simply nowhere to put them in this configuration. And did we ever figure out where the boiler would go?
No.
No. Having gotten to the point where the program, where this concept fails to meet program needs, it becomes quickly apparent that it would not be eligible for state aid. If it does not meet program needs, it wouldn't be approved for state funding. We checked with this, with the engineer from the Department of State Aid, and that is what he told us. So having gotten to this point and seeing that it failed to meet program needs, that is as far as Team Design got, because there is no point in going any further. Additionally, you don't get any additional playing fields, and you lose parking from what you already have. You still have undersized classrooms, you still have no auditorium, there's no shipping and receiving area, the administration area is undersized, your classroom is still undersized, your lockers are still in the hallway, which affects circulation and affects your ability to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. So this is considered to be a failure. This is not a viable option for us. We went back and asked Dan to price out this concept. Took me a little while to understand. As it is up here, as it is presented, as a failed concept, if you built it, it would cost you 17.4 million. That does not include cost for ball fields at around 1.6, and it does not include the cost of the trailers you would need to house students while this work is underway, which is $1,400 per trailer per year.
Per month.
Excuse me, per month, 1,400 per trailer per month. And we figure a minimum of 20 trailers, two classrooms per trailer. And then you have to have your utilities, and you have to have access and everything else, so figure three-quarters of a million dollars for that. That's probably a conservative number. And we don't know where we would put the trailers. And since you wouldn't get state aid, all this cost would be on the district. You might also jeopardize your state accreditation if you didn't meet program needs. Is that, that's a, that's a strong possibility. Then Team Design said, what would you need to do to option three to have it come into compliance with program needs? And the answer is add an additional 70-some-odd thousand square feet, 76,000 square feet, which would raise the cost to $30.3 million for option three, if you could make it meet program requirements, which if you add a 76,000 square feet, you'd have no parking, you'd have to acquire more land, which there's not, no land that we're aware of available in the immediate vicinity of the high school. That's option three. The big thing you need to take away is does not meet program requirements, therefore not eligible for state aid, therefore a failure, a failed option. Option four is existing the current school for a middle school and then building a new high school elsewhere. You might think of this as a three-building concept rather than a two-building, because you have the elementary school. So you have an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school, all in separate facilities. There's some advantages to that. You'd have, you'd certainly have total and complete separation between your You certainly have total and complete separation between your middle school and your high school students. You would keep at least one school in walking distance of downtown. If you have three facilities, you presumably have more flexibility than you would if you have two. You'd have more overall space, because you'd have to build two sets of gymnasiums and two sets of nurses' offices and administrative offices. So you'd end up with more gross floor space in two buildings than you would in one. You would be eligible for your 40% state aid, because this can meet program requirements. There are some cons. This is the highest initial cost, and it also gives you the highest operating cost, because you have to have two nurses, two sets of administrative staff. You don't get the economies of scale that you would, two sets of libraries and all, everything that goes along with that. I suppose this could make busing more complex. You're still going to have to acquire land. You're still going to have to build ball fields somewhere else. You may lose some cohesion, as the teachers have to work harder to communicate with each other, because they're in totally separate facilities. We're going to see that you're still going to have some undersized classrooms, and the design of the facility is not ideal. And let's take a look at that. This is option four. I hope people can see it on TV. This is the ground floor of the potential middle school renovation. Again, what you do is...
I think you need to stand on the other side.
Do I need to stand on the other side? I'll stand on the other side. Again, what you do is take the old section of the building and remove it, and rebuild space in its place. You renovate the current middle school section a bit, but you still end up with undersized classrooms in that middle school section, and Dan is nodding at me. You move your cafeteria to roughly the location of the current library. You have your industrial arts, consumer science, and art spaces down at the eastern end of the building. The disadvantage of this, aside from the cost, is if you take a look back at the pod concept that we talked about earlier, you're not able to set that up in this space. That is sort of the current best thinking, best mode of middle school teaching. It's very common to have the pod concepts. I know it's the fact that Barrington Middle School and many other middle schools operate on the team teaching concept, where you have a common area that is easily accessible to and shared by all the classes. It's not possible to do that in this space. You would have more of the traditional high school setup. And again, these classrooms would still be undersized, and there's no ability to add fifth grade into this structure either. So if I can throw in my own personal observation, I had a hard time explaining how I would spend the money that this would require, which is in the $32 million range, without being able to eliminate the portables at the elementary school. I have a hard time explaining that concept myself. So option four was the most expensive, did not completely satisfy our desire to roll out a true middle school curriculum for our middle school students, and also gave us the highest operating cost going forward, and still left us with the necessity to bring in trailers and have students for a period of time at a significant additional cost. Still have to acquire land, still have to do the ball fields, and not get the economies of scale. And you still have to build a high school somewhere else. So I think the total cost of this option was 32.6...
This would be 10, and then the new high school, 22.
Okay. The all-in cost without...
32.7.
32.6 without land acquisition. So we then turn to option five. The advantage of option five, there are many. There are no deficiencies, because you're starting on a clean slate. You're not dealing with any existing conditions, you're not dealing with unknowns. You know that you're going to meet all your program needs. You know that you're going to have the ability to expand and do things in the future. You know that you're going to achieve some economies of scale, because you're not going to have to build two sets of libraries, necessarily two sets of gymnasiums, two sets of administrative offices, et cetera. And you're going to be able to accomplish all the goals you want to accomplish. You're not going to have a disruption. You're not going to have to get trailers and disrupt your current program, because you can simply stay in your current facility until the new facility is ready. You can use the latest and greatest energy-saving techniques and technology, because, again, you're starting from a clean slate. You're going to have the ability to address all the community's overall goals and ambitions in terms of art performance space, playing fields, and things of that nature. You're going to be able to address a wide range of community needs and desires. This is going to maximize your opportunity to tuition students in from another district, either now or in the future. You're going to get complete and full integration of the latest computer technology and the best thinking in those areas, in communication technology. You're still going to be able to achieve a near-total segregation of your middle school and high school kids. We looked at some examples of districts that do that. Guilford is a combination middle school, high school, for example. I think Pelham is too, but we didn't go there. We may go there in the future. No more issues of parking or traffic safety. You can address all those issues. It frees up your current facility for reuse, possibly either figuring out a way to have it generate income or return it to the tax rolls. Should help you attract facility and staff, eligible for 40% state aid, and it can accommodate moving your fifth graders up here and relieving immediate pressure on the elementary school without additional investment in the elementary school facility. The cost is pretty high currently, and we'll talk about the details of this, but it's currently estimated in around $29.5 million. That's a number you start with, not the number hopefully you end up at. Can't locate this near the center of town. The land, the current standards for land for a high school, I think, are, oh, 30 acres plus 100 acres, plus one acre for every 100 students, I think, is the current standard. And that kind of land is not available near the center of our town. Those are some of the disadvantages. I hope this can be seen. I promised JT you I'd move it, so... The first thing I want to say is that no one should get hung up on exactly what this looks like. This is simply a concept to show you how things can lay out. This is option five, as Dan has given it to us as a concept. This is 200,000 square feet. By way of comparison, the existing junior, senior high school is in the 84,000 square foot range, so it's more than twice as big. This facility, on the day it opens its doors, can accommodate 967 students, which is, I think, our current enrollment in grades six to 12 is around a little over 600. The fifth graders, we probably have around 80 fifth graders. So if you threw the fifth graders in here, you're talking about 700 students or so on the day that it opened. So there's plenty of excess capacity built into this concept, as well as abilities here for future expansion, if that should become necessary. What you're looking at, this sort of teal section, is the high school portion of the building, and the middle school section down at the other end of the building. In between are the common areas, a 750-seat auditorium, a gymnasium that actually is two full-size basketball courts and bleacher capacity of 850, a cafeteria of, I think, 3,500 square feet, something in that range, library roughly the same size, separate high school and middle school locker rooms, your industrial arts section adjacent to your auditorium, so you can build sets and transport them easily, band ensemble space, individual practice rooms for music, music lab, choral space, very large art space on the second floor of the building. I think that's total, well over 3,500 square feet. You don't see these spaces broken down, because this is just blocking off space, and then the architect can break it down as necessary later. The library would be two, double height, basically. Is that correct? Yes. And you see that you've preserved kind of your middle school pod concept here, where you have five classrooms around a common area with team teaching areas, bathrooms for each pod, and storage and electrical and data closets in each area. So this is, this concept is in the range of $29.5 million, which, when you think about what the other options are, this is the least expensive option that meets all of our program requirements. Doesn't mean it's cheap. It means it's the least expensive option that meets all of our program requirements. And it gives us an idea of what to shoot for. I had something else to say, and I've forgotten it. Oh, yes. That cost includes the cost of six ball fields, two full-size soccer fields, I think, two softball fields, a full-size baseball field, and a lacrosse field. And then we would still, if we managed to acquire the land we have in mind, there would be sufficient space left, I believe, to build the track at some point.
No, yet.
We don't know yet. We hope so. We hope there would be sufficient land for additional expansion in the future. That cost includes, I think, Dan estimated $2 million for the auditorium fully equipped?
No, two and a half to three.
Two and a half to three for the auditorium fully equipped, and 2 million for furniture and furnishings for the entire building. So that's the cost. It does not include the cost of land acquisition. That would be a separate price. There would be parking, I think, 400, 500 parking spaces total, something? Something in that range. There would be 100 spaces immediately adjacent to the high school. There would be a separate dedicated bus drop-off.
And parent drop-off.
Separate dedicated parent drop-off and bus drop-off spaces, as well as, I think, 400 parking spaces in this area. And I think that's all I can think of to say about these options right now. This gives you an idea of what we've recommended and why we've recommended it, which is the objective I was trying to achieve with you. As Chris said, don't get totally hung up on cost of the design, but on cost, it also includes furnishings, includes full turnkey. It's important to understand that, because this would probably not happen for another year and a half. So these are also projecting inflation costs on all three scenarios. So, again, in today's dollars, it's not the same. We're projecting the reality that this is probably not going to happen overnight. And we use the same basic numbers for all three scenarios, so we use the same base data. So they're very, very equal, in the sense of how we looked at it. They all include furnishings, all include studies, traffic studies, engineering, architectural work. So we made sure that they all feel the same. So if one of them got an idea of bumping something up and down on the program, you'd have to slide that right across. So they are very, very together. As for the bottom-line number later on, that'll be worked on, including the program, including the design. So those are something later will be fine-tuned in much larger detail. It will include staff and include a lot of educators as well.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, Dan worked very hard, and the committee worked very hard to make sure we were comparing apples to apples, to make sure the comparisons you got were fair comparisons based on common assumptions, or similar assumptions among each option, so that the comparison is fair and valid. I'm sure I've left stuff out, but maybe it's just better at this point to entertain questions. There's a lot of information. I should say that the committee members who attended the meeting, and I think we were missing two or three, option five was approved unanimously. And that was after extensive discussion over several meetings. So it is the unanimous recommendation of the people who were attending and voting that night. Chris Bauer wasn't there, but he voted by proxy in favor of option five also. So it's a lot to take in.
Chris, did you want to add that the committee members were, who were, who the committee was comprised of, who was on that committee?
Yeah, to the extent I can remember.
Just that they were community members?
Yeah, the committee consisted of community members, members of the administration, members of the faculty. We had two students, I think both eighth graders, James Rosa and Laura Hackney. And so it was a pretty fair cross-section of people, and with a lot of input from Dan, very helpful input from him and his team over a long period of time. I think we read everything, we considered everything, we went on a number of school visits to other communities. Sue was really responsible for organizing that effort. We talked to a lot of people, read a lot of literature, spent a lot of time hashing, kicking this around. And so I think it's the result of a lot of hard work, very carefully and thoroughly considered, and a full and frank exchange of ideas, as they say in diplomatic circles. I think we're pleased with the work we've done, and we hope that the community takes it seriously and gives it a good, hard look.
Chris, when do you envision this becoming a reality, or being built? What is the timeframe that you have in mind, or that the committee has in mind?
We have in mind going to the warrant in March of 2006. Really, that's up to you. It's up to us when that happens. The reason, speed is of the essence, I think, for a couple of reasons. First of all, we are currently eligible for 40% state aid. That can change. That changes from year to year. We have no control over it. The minimum state aid is 30%. So you could leave, if it's $30 million, you could leave $3 million on the table if you go from 40 to 30%. Also, the cost of construction is increasing. So if you factor in 5%, just to pick a number, 5% increase cost of construction every year, the price only goes up. If it's 5% a year, in 10 years, it's 45 million. In 20 years, it's 60 million.
So if it goes to warrant in March of '06 and passes, so we'll get started immediately? And when do you expect the doors to open?
No.
Or what is the process?
I guess, work backwards from an... Figure...
I can answer that.
Come on out there. We'll have the professional answer to that question.
Once you pass into March, you have to put the building through a design, and you have to go through many approvals, local and state, and that will take a good eight to 10 months. After that, you're going to send it out to bid and get your contractor on board and award it. So it's almost another year before you really get a shovel in the ground, which would be in the spring of 2007. This would take anywhere between 16 and 20 months to construct. So you'd have it ready for September 2008 as the earliest. The latest would be probably at the holidays, you know, December of 2008. That would be the latest. So it would be in that timeframe, when you actually would... So it would be in that timeframe when you actually would have something to go into. But it is quite a process between getting all the approvals. That's the part that triggers taking time. And people always think, March, you're in the ground, well, you've got to put this all together. So it is a long process, it isn't overnight.
So best case, I think what Dan is saying is best-case scenario, everything goes smoothly, which it never does. You would be opening the doors in September two thousand and eight. That's, work backwards, figure, figure out when you want to open. Sixteen to twenty months before that is when you put the shovel in the ground. And then a year before that is when you really do your final design, assuming that it passes the warrant. We have plenty to do in the meantime, between now and March. What we're envisioning and what's part of the recommendation that you have is that you, we, you, we set up a, a design committee and, you know, take whatever steps are necessary to make sure that we have design professionals there to facilitate that process and start generating some elevations and some conceptual drawings, start refining things a little bit. I think it's incumbent upon us to start developing lists of concept, bullet points. If you go back, the best model I can think of for this is the New Market Tomorrow Committee report, which is, which developed the, the design concepts for the downtown redesign. We had a committee of twenty-two people who spent a year, and we ended up with a list of bullets. You know, we want sidewalks with natural materials. We want more landscaping in the downtown. And then, you know, you just make a list of what you'd like to see and your design professional takes that and starts working with it and turning it into something, you know, starts turning it into a design. Is that a fair way to summarize it? So you don't have to do, you don't have to work out the details, you don't have to be able to read a blueprint. Just say, hey, look, I want a, I want a, I want a computer network that has, that has two or three or four data drops in every room, hardwired, but a wireless network where I can go anywhere in this building and be able to use my wireless laptop. Well, your design professional takes that and says, this is how, this is what we need to make that work. What we're proposing to do, and that's why the recommendation includes task forces, take this big decision about what is this thing going to look like and break it down into chunks. So you have a task force on lighting, you have a task force on furniture and fixtures, you have a task force on athletics, you know, how do you want your gym to be equipped? How do you want your, what do you want your field to look like? You have a task force, you have task forces that include the department heads from the school, the science department. This is what we want in our science classrooms. We want to have movable tables, stationary tables. We want high ceilings so we can do physics experiments in the classroom. You just start brainstorming that stuff. You sit down with a piece of paper and you start writing it out and you start developing concepts. And that lets you, that lets you hit the ground running when the real formal design process gets underway. It also has the benefit of getting more people involved because there are lots of people in the community, and we heard this from the community forums that we organized and that Carmen Brand organized, that there are people out there who are electrical engineers, there are people out there who are contractors, there are people out there who are interested in landscaping, who maybe don't, maybe they don't have the time to sit on a committee for a year, but they can do a task force and donate some, dedicate some expertise in these areas and say, you know, this is what I, I work with this every day, I know how to, I know how to work with this. And I can devote two or three meetings to sharing some ideas and helping you develop some of these concepts in a meaningful way. So I think it, it has the benefit of really helping to energize a lot of people. And we're just, we're going to need a lot of time, a lot of energy, and we're going to need a lot of brain power, you know, a lot of, a lot of good faith and goodwill. The community's been very good. Every single time we've asked them to step up to the plate and dedicate some energy, they've done it. So we're very excited about, about, you know, taking that, taking that to the next logical step and giving them something that they can, giving the community something they can put their stamp on. Now, this facility would be designed to meet our needs on into the foreseeable future. Dan, this is like eleven hundred if you maxed out, eleven hundred students? Something, if you, if you did all the expansions?
You can bring it up to two hundred students in there?
Okay, so that would put you.
Yeah, you're going to be close to twelve hundred.
Close to twelve hundred maxed out in this.
And you could do those in steps.
Yep. You would do it in the steps. You would, you would plan for the expansion if you needed it, but that would be, that would be, I don't think we project anything. That's well beyond twenty years. So this building would have a useful life of at least fifty years and basically would serve our needs into the foreseeable future. Exactly the same concept that was used with the firehouse. You know, it serves our needs into the foreseeable future and we don't anticipate having to deal with it again. Well, that's, that's, that's the concept we're going for here. And at the same time, we're talking a lot about middle school and high school. We don't want to lose sight of the elementary school, we're going to spin that off, master plan that. And when you're done with that, you're going to have a district-wide facilities and program master plan, which we've always dreamed about having. This is one step, the elementary school will be another step. And if we're, if we're patient and we keep the energy going, we'll, we'll really be in good shape for the foreseeable future with all of our school facilities. That's the ultimate objective.
Does anyone have any?
I'm sorry Jonathan's not here for this.
He had an, an emergency.
I understand. But Dan is here, and this is a good opportunity to pick his brain.
Chris, did you people anticipate, let's say, some more additions of classrooms in regards to specifics? For example, if, if we decided we wanted to take care of our students which would, which would attend the Seco School of Technology, to, to give them that, that basics that they're going to need, that we will be teaching it instead of us sending students there to get that material?
I'm going to let Dan address that if he doesn't mind. I guess, I guess he's asking what the flexibility of the type of space that you have, the varieties of classrooms you can have.
It's still with how you grow tech like you have now. But in here, there is an industrial arts area which will be, and we haven't gotten to the details, but they'll be working on small tools, I mean, small, small engines, they'll be working with wood, they'll be working probably with metal. And that has not been defined a hundred percent, but we sat down with the staff and they want to make sure their students still have some hands-on working knowledge with industrial arts as an example. Same thing with unified arts and music and others. So all these would have still some specialty spaces for special classrooms.
Yeah, what I'm talking about is not industrial arts, it's going to be something advanced and it's going to require a special classrooms.
If you wanted to add a computer-aided design.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you folks want, that's the next step that Chris is talking about. The professionals would get involved in the more detailed fashion to get exactly those kinds of thoughts on paper.
The engineers that we have in town could get involved with some of that.
Right, if they have some creative ideas, your design professional would incorporate them in. The school board would still be the final clearinghouse for those options. But yes, that's the whole idea of the task force, is to bring together some different types of ideas, working with the educators and formulating them. Those kinds of rooms would be probably a little bit oversized rooms, with very flexible types of situations where they would have technology at them, but, but very flexible, so it isn't tied to anything. So you could do something special. You might have a very highly specialized science area for forensics, for instance. You might have in the arts, maybe very into pottery and, and firing with kilns and, and glazings. I don't know. These are things that I've seen and every community has some strengths in certain areas. Some people really get into drama and music. I believe that's why the auditorium is being sought after, is they really want to bring in those kinds of arts. And we'll incorporate whatever you want. And when we get those finer details, that will also click us in providing up-to-date estimates on the cost of the building so we can do the pluses and minuses, as you would like this. We'd have a shopping list of things and we can take a look at it and see how far you can go. Some of them may be future, some of them may be right now. This thing could mush two ways. Get a little smaller and spend a little less now, but have the provisions for the additions. What we try to do is make sure things like your boiler rooms, your electrical entrances, your cafeterias and your kitchens, things that you can't add on very easily, we would do that for the core. And everything else would be a plan-as-you-go growing out. And we make sure the surrounding land has those provisions.
So this configuration could be tweaked here or there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is, this is a first cut to see how it would look if we're attempting to try to make two schools, a school within a school. Basically, a middle concept, which is a little different in the sense of configuration where a high school is more traditional. We try to make a major separation. That may be tweaked, making it more separated or whatever. But, but I know with my experience, you're talking in the realm of that kind of size of building. So that, that's why I'm saying, when we number crunch, we know all three are very similar in the outcome of what you would wind up with. It may be, it may look totally different. But it's the beginning of some thoughts, some vision. And we need help from wherever we can get.
Just keep in mind that those task forces that the facilities committee would, would generate would be those groups that would address exactly what you were talking about. What does it look like? What will the programs look like? What will we need for the future? All we did was give blocks of space in this design, even like the art room. It's just, it's just a space, but we haven't talked about the ceramics, the photography, the painting. But what, we didn't know that yet, Chet. So we kind of just gave it blocks of space.
I don't think, no, they don't have that.
There is a document that has a lot of bullets on those spaces you're talking about as a first attempt.
Chris, I was wondering if, at the same time, should there be a curriculum committee formed, which would study the curriculum at the same time?
Well, we've taken the view, I mean, curriculum is a little bit beyond the scope of what the facilities committee does, but we have talked about it. We talked about lots of stuff that's not within our scope. We're, we're certainly, I think it's fair to say that we're generally of the opinion that at the same time, that we don't want to just roll out the same old things we've been doing in the same old ways we've been doing them in a new building. That we would consider that to be a failure. And Mrs. Brooks is working very hard with the staff and the staff is working very hard to, to really kind of retrench and say, what are we doing? How can we do this differently? How can we do this better? I like to think, and this is something we need to discuss, okay? That we're kind of taking a comprehensive look at what we're doing and how we're doing it and why we're doing it. So I think the answer to that question is yes, but you primarily need to look to Superintendent and Mrs. Brooks to talk about that in more detail. I think, I think you can't help, but, I mean, you're challenging people. You're challenging your faculty, you're challenging your administration and your community. And you can't help but stir up some new ideas about things. And I, I think it's healthy as long as we keep positive energy flowing and positive thought vibes going out. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's healthy. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I, I would, the question was, would there be a curriculum committee? Yes, very definitely. Because what Chris has said is very true. We wouldn't want to move everything as we're doing it now into a new building. We would do things much differently if we had the space to do it.
Very simply and obviously, first of all, you're going to have, your middle school is going to be laid out the way it should be laid out. That's going to, the middle school teachers are dying to do this, to really implement this team teaching concept, which is the way they're trained now, they're just not able to do it. So that is necessarily going to change and improve. We're obviously hoping and hoping to achieve, hoping to end up with more achievement from our students and better, more productivity from our staff. That's what we're always looking for. We think they do a great job and we think if we give them better tools to work with, they'll do even better. That's, that's, otherwise, why, otherwise, why are we doing it? Right? So.
I'd like to think that you're seeing some of that even now, Chet. Next year, we have advanced English, we have advanced placement chemistry. That, those have required shifts in the curriculum. I, I believe that with the implementation of the math program and the gifted and talented program at the elementary level, that's going to cause additional challenges to our middle, high school curriculum. So they don't happen overnight, like this building won't happen overnight, but it is a process and I think we've taken that very, very seriously.
To go back to what you were saying about kind of specialized classrooms for things, I mean, we, we've, we talked in concept about how it would be nice to think about having one feature, one program, something in the, in the school that makes it distinctive, that makes it different than all the other schools in the area. Something we do that people identify New Market with, you know, whether it's engineering or whether it's astronomy or whether it's pottery, whatever it is. Something that makes us a destination, gives us, gives us a distinct identity. And then, so that, that concept has been floated. And if there are directions that the school board wants to give to the task forces, that's, the school board's prerogative. We, we have drafted up a set of, it's kind of mini mission statements for each task force, a one-sentence thing saying, we want you to think about X. You know, we want you to think about, develop, develop conceptual designs for the efficient design of a, of a chemistry classroom. You know, what do you want to see? You've got to get input from your faculty, you want to get input from your students, you want to get input from your community. Because if, if it doesn't work for them, if it doesn't work for the students and the faculty, then you're spinning your wheels, right? And it's got to work for the community, they've got to see they're getting value out of it. So that's, that's how the task forces are envisioned to run. There's going to be plenty for the school board to do. If there's going to be an elementary school master plan committee, there should be a school board member on it. There should be school board, not necessarily in every task force, but there are some task forces where school board members should probably participate. I mean, and we certainly have to be kind of the clearinghouse for a lot of stuff. This is, this is a big, big challenge for us as well. I mean, these recommendations are pretty comprehensive. And there's going to be a lot for us to do. We have to think carefully about the kind of administrative structures, how these committees work, what the, what the lines of reporting are. We can't, you know, in addition to overseeing this process, our, our administration has to continue to run the district on a day-to-day basis and pass the budget and do everything else. And we have to think very carefully about how we're going to do all this and where are the resources going to come from? How are they going to be allocated? So it's a, it's a major challenge for us too. That's, you know.
Roughly how many committees do you have?
Task forces do we have envisioned? We haven't, I think I.
We are close to twenty, at least twenty.
At least twenty.
At least twenty.
And roughly how many people per task force do you think is a, is a good number?
Well, I, I don't know. I anticipate some will be multitudes. I anticipate, for example, that the athletics task force will attract upwards of twenty people will try to get on it. And we're going to have to decide or let the, let the design committee decide. How many is too many? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. You'd want to get the town involved in that and you'd.
And do you have a, a process in terms of people who are interested in these task forces? How, how do they become involved? Will there be an application process? Have you thought about things like that yet or?
No, we really haven't gotten to that point yet. We're kind of looking for some direction, obviously, from the school board before we proceed.
We've, we've introduced the concept at the forums and people understand that it's coming. Exactly what the task forces are going to be, I'm not sure the school board needs to decide. They can authorize this design committee to take responsibility for that. But you're, you're going to see it. You're going to see we're proposing twenty task forces. It's, there's a lot involved. And Dan will tell you, you know, you want to have a task force that thinks about bathrooms. Bathrooms are a major issue. So you want to, you want to have a group of people who are thinking about bathrooms and locker rooms. You want to, you want to have your administration thinking about what's, how is the office space going to be laid out? We have to know how we're going to staff this. Are we going to have a principal and then an assistant principal in each school? Are we going to have them all in one location? Will we have the assistant principals with offices here and there? So the administration needs a separate task force to think about, a separate set of people just to focus on that issue. You're going to have to have a technology committee that thinks about how to implement and roll out all these technologies. Security and safety are going to be huge. They're always huge. You're going to have to think about how you're going to set things up so that the community can have access to the auditorium and the, and the gymnasium without disrupting, you know, without being able to get into the classroom portions of the building. You see how it becomes a complex problem, and the only way to deal with it is to break it down into chunks. Have the design committee kind of sitting on top and have your design professionals there to make sure stuff is, people aren't working at cross purposes. But that all the facility, all the community's requirements are addressed as far as they can be. I'm, I'm not aware of any better way to do it than to break it down into pieces and.
It's a filtering system.
It's a filtering system. You go in and you, you break it down and you work on it, and then you count on your design professionals to pull it together in the end.
In our forums that we had, in visitations, we had a number of parents sign up and expressed an interest in participating in this. So we already have a pool of people. We'll do what we've done in the past. We'll advertise, we'll put it out in our newsletters on T, on Channel 13, inviting people to participate and help us. And I think the key is, is that these aren't long, long-term commitments, you know, because people are busy, and we appreciate that. They may be just very short, you know, a month, two-month process, depending on how they want to structure it. So it isn't a long-term commitment, but we really want to involve the community.
And inappropriate steps along the way. You say to your design professional, you know, when you think it's appropriate, come in and report to the board. Where are you at? Where are we at? So that there, so that you understand that there's public presentations. This is where we're at. And then design, conceptual designs will be developed gradually over time, and those will be presented to the public, and there'll be an ongoing reality check kind of process to it. That's our understanding of the way this process works and, you know, the, the people in this town are pretty familiar with this kind of thing by now. We went through it with the downtown design. They understand how the Surett process works. And they were basically not going to throw anything at them they haven't seen. It's just, this is probably a bigger price tag than they've seen, and this is as big a facility as this town has ever seen and probably would ever see. Whether it's 200,000 square feet or 160 or 120 or whatever it's going to be, it's going to be a significant investment of time. And we want to do it right. We want to do it right. You only get one shot at this.
What I'd like to see happen over the next months is several more forums, community forums, where this is presented, where, where the community can, you know, voice their, their opinions, and we'd really, um, these next forums, I'd really like to see televised. So maybe we hold them downstairs as opposed to at the school, just so that we can.
Well, we held them at the school, you know, to get the people into that high school.
Oh, no, absolutely. That's, that was a good.
I agree with you, though. The TV will be a great resource.
Yeah.
Now, now it's a matter of, okay, let's really talk about specifics and, and get some, some feedback and some.
Yeah, Carmen Brand has already talked about rolling out those forums periodically, whether it's every month or every two months, however, whatever is necessary. And also getting community members to go on tours of other buildings, whether to see what other schools are like. One of the handicaps we really had to work to overcome is you don't really know what's out there, you know? People, the, when you go to a, a modern facility, it really impacts the way you look at our facility. It really, really does because, you know, that facility we have is outdated in every sense of the word. And I can't, I don't know how else to say it except that it is. It's very outdated in terms of as a building and as a vehicle for the delivery of education. Time, it's, it's served us well for a long time and, but it has been passed by, by the way education is now delivered. And I don't think it serves our needs. I think the, the committee has concluded that it doesn't really serve our educational needs anymore, and it's not capable of serving our educational needs anymore. It's time to let it retire with dignity and, and to move on into the future.
Chris, how far down the design path do we expect or need to be before we come to voting in the spring? And we, we don't need to certainly have the colors of the floor tiles or these types of things, but.
I think we, well, Dan, you want to?
We'd work out a site plan, I mean, a, a flow plan that the educators would be happy with, knowing that if it passes, we normally spend two months right after the bond to reassess and redesign pieces of it again. Because what actually happens is a lot of people don't believe it's going to pass, so they don't give you the input that you think you're going to get. Once it passes, all of a sudden, all kinds of ideas come about. So we always ha- hold two months right after the bond passes. But before then, we're going to get a lot of input, and we'll have a plan that's more detailed than this and be, are very well thought out. There'll be bullets on what's in all the spaces and generic ideas. We will talk as, as long as you want about finishes even. We'll give you examples of what we kind of recommend and what we've seen works in terms of durability. We'll actually talk to your, your maintenance and, and the facilities people to find out, you know, what works for them. You'll also have exterior elevations. You'll have sort of a, a 3D version of the outside. We'll have a site plan.
Yeah, what kind of elevation?
Some kind of like, site plan that'll be worked out, because we're going to have to work out, we're probably going to request that you have some test pits, maybe some test borings, maybe some people getting involved with wetlands if they're budding it, taking a look at septic and all the utilities. We'd even go to a point of talking to your fire and building departments and planning boards and get some ideas with the conceptuals, are we on the right target? But it'll be to a point where it's not totally solid, but it'd be conceptually approvable in the sense that if it got passed, you wouldn't see anything significantly different other than the details. And that's why it takes two months after, is the details kind of change. And you'll find a few rooms move around. It usually happens. But it'd be floor plans, elevations, site plans, and some recording sites we'll work on, especially utilities in site, making sure groundwater and things like that, making sure there's no surprises, so when it does go, septic, water, electricity, things like that.
Things that'll most likely impact the price tag.
Right. The key to it is, you hit the nail on the head, is when we come up with a, a number, we know after bond passes, there's no more money. So we got to be as close to that number and as close to a final product without exasperating everybody's time and effort, because everybody's got things to do. And people are always kind of nervous, will it pass? So you get a different sense of involvement. Some people are believers, some are hiding away. But when it passes, it's amazing what happens, is two months of flurry.
Excitement.
Excitement is a reality check all of a sudden. We just had two schools that just passed recently. One is Wyndham and Ware, and Ware was a sleeper, first time they ever went out, and it's kind of a very quiet town, and they thought it wasn't going to pass. Well, it took us two months. It passed, everybody came out of the woodwork, and we spent that time. We basically increased the building, but I see, it's about 135,000 square fees, feet, increased by 4,000 because there were things that people thought about. But in our budget, we had a contingency that took that. So we, we were able to absorb that to a point, and we anticipate that to happen, because we, we know whatever we do, there's something else that's going to come up. So we've done this over and over and over. We've done over 50 of these projects, so we've kind of learned how to go about it, to make sure we get enough credible information that the board feels comfortable with, that they feel comfortable in approving, go to the public, show them all the evidence they need to say, we've got our act together, it's a reliable information, and then if it passes, is go to the next phase and detail it up and then go out to bid. So.
It is very important, and Dan has told us he would generate elevation drawings, a side view of the building to show you what it would look like, because this, this is helpful, but it doesn't really show you what the building's going to look like when it's done, which is something else you got to think about. Like, we had a meeting when, when Jim Delisle was here, one of Dan's partners, said, well, okay, what about, what about the roof? Is it going to be a pitched roof? Is it going to be a flat roof? And they said, well, they would envision pitched roofs on top of the schools and then a mansard roof on the, you know, a facade roof on the front section, on the common section, so your mechanicals can hide behind it. So when you approach the building, you won't see any of that. It'll be, it'll be more attractive. So it'll be, you can hear that, you can kind of see, see it in your mind, but it's helpful to have a drawing to say, okay, this is what it's going to look like. You got to make decisions about whether this is going to be a brick-faced building or whether it's not going to be, or what it's going to, you know, all those things. Are you volunteering for a task force?
Where's the list?
So, yeah, it's, it's, we think, you know, whatever we need to do to communicate with people and to help them understand what they're getting for the dollar, I think that's what we're going to. And Dan's been through this 50 times, and so he's got a pretty good idea, I think, of what's helpful to see, and we're going to rely on his advice and rely on what the community tells us they want to see.
Chris, can you talk a little bit about the whole concept of this being a real community facility and, and how, how this current?
I know that one. That's, that's the only thing Dan knows.
One of the biggest thing that was told to us almost a year ago is make sure this is community-based, because you're going to spend all this money and you, you don't want to shut the doors at night. So the two wings can be shut down. And the center portion is primarily used for the community, an auditorium, a gymnasium, cafeteria, a media center, and you can also shut down the admin. Right over here, so you can enter here and enter from here and basically shut that off, shut that off. Within those spaces, you have full bathrooms, full custodial, full access to electrical outlets and electrical circuitry. So that whole center area is meant to be used as much as you dare the public to use and control it. The key to it is control, but it is primarily used, the center part is primarily accessible for community use. So you can really work that out. We'd also work out parking and play fields and accommodations. So even it extends to the, the playgrounds and the play fields. We want to make sure the parking is, is such in a place that it's not only near the building, but it's also near the play fields. We want to make sure all those things work. We may even, some people will request it, there might be a separate small building for storage of equipment, and it might be a small concession stand and a couple of bathrooms near the play fields. So those things will be talked about to make sure that if you shut parts of it down, you can get somebody there and you still have some facilities and accommodations.
I want to add to that, that we, we talked about this, and just, one of the things this facility does, it gives you an, an ability to generate some cash. Let me tell you what I'm talking about. One of the schools we visited, I don't remember which one, has an auditorium, like, similar to this, and they, they lease it out periodically for performances or for a local business wants to have their people come in and have a big conference, 11, $1,200 a pop, not including the cost of your janitorial and the cost of opening and closing the building. There, I know that Barrington Middle School and also Noble High School, they host AAU basketball tournaments, middle school basketball tournaments. It costs you $5 a pop to get in. That money goes right back to the district to support the programs. It gives you the ability to do that. Something that I have been personally toying with is if you're going to have a computer aided design classroom, that classroom should never, should never have a cold seat in it. Why can't you run adult education in there? You know, have a satellite program from New Hampshire Tech or something and run adult education. I'm sure there's lots of people who'd like to get into that for a career. It really gives you the opportunity to explore some stuff like that, to expand the programs and to generate, generate some revenue and to offer an, an increasing service to the community. So that's all stuff you talk to your architect about. You say, hey, look, I want to, I want to be able to run adult education in a part of this building, so I want to have air conditioning in these five or six classrooms. And Dan sits down and he figures it out. And he comes back and says, this is how we can do it. And then you go, you go ahead from there.
So the entire building won't have central air?
That's something we have to decide.
And in, in terms of the footprint itself, will there be anything in a basement sort of a situation, or is this going to be on a slab?
It'll be on a slab.
On a slab? If you were to add more of a lower level, would that be, increase the cost, how much? Could you figure that out?
It's also accessibility and codes.
Uh-huh.
E-grids, buried spaces are very tough to deal with codes.
But it makes it more accessible anyway. I mean, what would you want to have buried?
Well, you know, if you had it set in somewhere on a, on a, on a slope like and so forth or whatever, you could have part of the building.
Oh, yeah. We would definitely, if we have a sloping site.
Yeah.
We would start taking advantage of some of the backup space.
Yep.
Be your mechanicals and your bathrooms and, you know, places where they're not occupied, definitely.
But the way.
Assuming a flat site, that's why, I'm sorry. Said flat, I meant flat because I was thinking of a flat site at this point, but sloping sites.
The site we have in mind is flat. So, basically flat, or it will be by the time we're done with it. If we ever acquire it.
Well, I, I, you're looking here. I'm, would like to give you some recommendation. This is a lot of information. We knew that, the committee knew that, when they brought this forward. There's several things that you could think about. You could have the next month through July, your next meeting is July 14, to, to think about this and, and sort of stew over it, and, or you could call a special meeting just to, just to further discuss this amongst yourselves. You could have a public hearing on this and want to maybe advertise it as such and invite the public to come in and give you feedback on, in terms of the project. So you have some options here. Quite frankly, I know that Chris has been updating you every board meeting for the last year and a half, but there's been a facilities report, so this, a lot of this really isn't new information. I think this, this tonight, the, you know, the schematics were, move tonight to adopt the recommendations and wait for the formal report to the formal report, which will be ready July 14 with all the backup and all the information. So you have some options tonight.
I think my inclination would be to allow the community more of an opportunity to comment on this as we get a chance to absorb it as well. And, and I just would like to get some input from other board members about this. I, I, I feel that there's been a tremendous amount of work on this, and Chris, you have done, at the risk of, of giving you some public accolades here, which I find fairly counter to my nature. I do want to say that the, that you have done a tremendous job with this in a way that, that, I mean, I know a host of people have worked very, very hard on this, but as a school board representative, both you and Kathy Murphy have done a phenomenal amount of work to bring us to this point, and.
Don't forget Sue.
Sue as well. I, I mean, it's just, you know, so much has gone into this.
I think it'd be appropriate to, to shout out and thank you to the whole committee. They've been great.
Oh, yes.
Chris and Skip and Bill Archery and Carmen and John O'Tash and Debbie and Scott, everybody's just done a fantastic job.
And I, I think, though, that I, I think the idea that this is now emerging in this kind of way, I want to be very careful that, that folks who are in the community, who are watching us at home tonight and who have heard rumblings about this, be, but have not necessarily decided to, to step up and get involved in a direct kind of way, who maybe have not seen some of these plans or had a chance to fully absorb the pros and cons of, of the recommendations that you've covered tonight, that those of us have had a chance to kind of chew on a little bit more, I would like to give them an opportunity to do that. And, and from where I'm sitting, I think the idea of some sort of additional forum for people to comment on this be before we, we move ahead.
You could actually have a public hearing. On this issue and this issue only.
Yeah, I think, what, what do you guys think about that?
I think that's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea. The only, I only offer one counterweight, and it's not a disagreement, which is that March is right around the corner. So I wouldn't, I would respectfully suggest that we not drag that out too long, but that we be prepared to make a, to make a decision on these recommendations by July 14th, or at, at July, by the July, July 14th meeting, I think we, so I just throw that out there as a caution, because time is, time is slipping away and you don't get it back.
We have stimulated some interest. You know, that video has been on and they changed some of the time that was on. Dana, would you be willing to comment today on just what happened to you as a citizen? I think it's sort of, it hit me today. If you would.
You're familiar with this, Dana.
I know, there's my heart discussion here, yeah. First of all, I, I really want to thank Kathleen Murphy for, I purposely went for Kathleen Murphy for, I purposely went for a tour unannounced. I didn't want anybody hiding anything. I wanted to see the real thing in action and how it was working. Kathleen was gracious enough to bring me up there and Pammy, is it Pammy Caswell?
Yes.
Pammy Caswell, yes.
Yes.
Took me on the tour. And she did not hide anything. I saw everything. And she'll tell you, my eyes were popping, popping everywhere. And the second thing I think we need to do is, even though, Chris, you've done a great job on this tremendously, a wonderful job, but we also need to thank our teachers. The teachers, after I saw that environment today, they're saints, absolutely saints. And I'm not here to patronize them. They know what they do and they know what they do on a daily basis. However, it was just shocking to me to see, and I need to be careful how I word this, because it was deplorable to me to see what I saw. The teachers are no longer talking about a Band-Aid situation. They're now talking duct tape, because the Band-Aid doesn't work anymore. And I had the opportunity in every class that I went to, in every section of the building that I went to, I specifically asked the teachers, if you had the opportunity to change something today, what would be the thing you want to change the most? And it was a 30-second question I asked. I didn't give much time to think about it. There wasn't much time. The number one thing was space. We need the space. I saw classrooms that I was there back, and I graduated in '69, so I'm telling my age here. But when I started there, the high school was there, but in my freshman year, they were working on the, what is now called a junior high. That was actually the elementary. And we had space. It was spacious. I remember the typing room. It was long, very open space. Everybody had access to, back then, a typewriter. Now I see rooms that are chopped up, those same rooms are chopped up to three rooms. And I have to say to every teacher, how do you teach? How do you do this? And the other thing was most shocking to me, there was absolutely nothing in there that would say to me, other than the teachers' dedications and the staff's dedication to invite a child to come in and want to learn. I looked at the cafeteria. That reminded me of the cafeteria, of the tables, the rows, the round, the benches. No other word to describe it. A prison, where they all come in, they sit down, they eat, and then they go out. There's no way of building, I want to say teamwork, how students can, you know, work together, form bonds and friendships and move around in that cafeteria. It is all regimented. It is all very sterile. It is all, nothing inviting again, absolutely nothing. You see the smile and the greeting of the staff that says, hi, come on in, come to my class. What do you teach? Very open. They want to talk. They want to do their jobs. And we need to give them the facility to do this, absolutely. I would encourage, I think I told Kathleen this afternoon, I made the point to go back to her office, and the one thing I said was, we need to get every parent, every taxpayer to go out there and look at that facility. And you've been most gracious to accommodate people to go out on the spur of the moment. However, if this is going to pass, which I'm hoping it will, the concept, the whole thing, you've got to get the community, and it's hard to get the community more involved, get them to come out there. Every single elected official needs to go out there and look at that facility. And you will walk away with a shock. It's like, how do you do it? How do you do it? So I had an eye-opening today. I should have done it a long time ago. I didn't do it. I kicked myself for that. But I, I'm using my position as a counselor here, that I would do anything and everything I can to assist this entity in the town. And I would be more than happy to serve on any committee. I don't have any children in school. I'd be more than happy to serve.
Dana, you said you did go to school here.
Yeah.
So it's interesting. I think that there's probably a lot of folks in the audience and in the community who went to school there and said, and say to themselves, what? I went to school there and it's fine. And I think you're right, that people do need to go, because, you know, I think back to my high school years, you know, a few years ago, and everything was rosy. And I bet if I walked through, you know, Exeter, I might say, oh my gosh, I can't believe that we, that, you know. So I really think that you're right, that people.
It was absolutely an eye-opener. I mean, if some people went to school there in 1945 or 1950, yes, back then it was the state of the art and you had the flexibility of expansion. And my understanding is, when I talked to the staff today, was there was this expansion done internally, remodeling, I guess you want to call it. And then a couple of years later, there was more remodeling done, which undid the remodeling they had done prior to that. So it's definitely a Band-Aid situation, and you cannot keep on doing that to that facility. That facility, as what Chris Hawkins just said, is it's time to put it to rest, absolutely. And we need to teach our kids today what's coming in the future. In order to do that, you've got to have the means, the facilities, the equipment, the technology to do that. That's imperative, imperative.
Thank you for those comments.
The last time the building was expanded in 1987 to achieve its current configuration, there were 356 students in the building. There's now over 600 in the same space. And it's been, as Dana's pointed out, it's been carved up and cut up. I don't think anyone can say that you just have to make do with what you have, because we have been making do with what we have for the last 20 years. And it's just, there's nowhere else to go in the current footprint. And I think people, before anybody comes in and says that, I think they need to go and tour the building.
So let's talk a little bit about next steps here, if I can kind of move the process along a little bit. We have a few other things on our agenda tonight. How do people feel, I mean, we have a series of choices that have been presented to us. We could hold a public hearing on this between now and our next school board meeting to request additional community input, if we think that's appropriate and would be helpful. We could opt to not do that. We could opt to move ahead of that. I'm looking for some discussion from school board members regarding next steps.
I think a public hearing, a dedicated public hearing to this issue is a good idea. I think we may want to hold it downstairs, so we can be televised, but there's room for people to come. We could have these things put up on boards and put them around the room. We could put sticky notes, those big poster-sized sticky notes, people can write whatever they want on them. I think that'd be a good idea. I'm checking my calendar.
What do others feel about this? Chet, what do you think about this?
I think so.
Think that's a good next step?
I think.
What are your thoughts?
I think we invite the facilities committee, too.
I think it's a great idea. I'm hesitant, though, to give up on the idea of holding it at the school, just as another way to bring people there. The limitations are televising it?
Well, we could tape it.
You could tape it and then rebroadcast.
We could tape it and then rebroadcast it. That's the other alternative to, you know, using the high school.
Is there any way we could broadcast live from the high school?
No. No. We don't have a remote unit, yet.
What about the helicopter?
Chris, we've had a number of public events at the high school. We have invited the public to the high school, several.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Do we seem to get a larger turnout in this building, which is televised live, or a larger turnout at the high school?
Well, I mean, the point is, you don't know what your turnout is when it's on TV.
Right.
So the last forum we had in the evening was pretty well-attended. Will we get fewer people if we had it here? I don't think so. It's hard. I don't know how you draw that conclusion.
I guess I just want to respond, as much as we want to bring people in, we have been inviting people in regularly to the school. And my goal with a public forum like this would be more people, and more people to see what we'd like to propose. And I think there are going to be some ongoing opportunities for people to visit the schools, to get what Dana suggested that happened within.
Anybody.
I have a thought on that, too.
Yeah.
Anybody who wants to visit the school need only call the school office and ask for an opportunity to come visit the school. And Mrs. Brooks is very accommodating.
One of the things I would suggest is, in order to convince the public, which some of them still need to be convinced, as what you were saying, I would suggest you have the public hearing, have the public hearing within the facility in which you're looking to make changes. They have an eye-opener. They can see it.
Okay.
You know, while you're having it there, maybe do small little tours of that facility, even though it's not going to be broadcast. Some people probably would feel, we don't really want to have it broadcast live, but I can see it on the tape later on. I think it's just so important to get the people there in the facility and do small little tours, branch off and do those tours. Another thing, too, you could possibly do, Chris, maybe you're the expert on this one, is to get this information on the internet. Can you do, take the design concept, so somebody could go to the school website and click on it and just get a somewhat of a concept of what that would look like.
I've already been asked that, and the answer is, I don't know whether we could get these drawings in a format.
We can.
Yeah, PDF.
In color?
Yep. Yeah.
Then the answer is yes.
Okay, well, why don't we, just to, thanks, Dana, just to move this along, why don't we go for a public hearing at the facility and let's talk about dates for that?
Last week in June?
Does the 30th work? It's a Thursday evening. It's when we have.
Where's for me?
Is that, how does that, is that workable from a perspective of?
Time, yeah.
Time for the school board, also for the facility itself, Kathy? Do you have any comments on that?
That would be Debbie, as far as the facility, I don't know.
Debbie, June 30th?
Debbie, June 30th, at the facility.
Anything on the calendar, is what you're suggesting?
That's my question.
There should not be anything.
It's fine. I just looked at my calendar, because I will be away at the commissioner's conference, but I will be back.
Great, okay. Why don't we, why don't we, we don't need a formal motion for this, do we?
As long as Kathy posts it in sufficient time.
Oh, I would do that tomorrow.
Okay, let's go ahead and schedule that. And thanks again to all the members of the facilities committee. Thanks for that report, Chris.
Where will you?
I told you it was going to take a long time.
Will you be meeting in the cafeteria, Jonathan, or the music?
We'll decide that.
What makes, what do you think makes sense?
Makes the most sense.
That's what we did in the past.
Pardon me?
Isn't that what we did in the past? We started in the cafeteria?
You know, we've always had, all the other forms have been in the music room, but the cafeteria, you could hold more people.
What about the gymnasium?
I think the cafeteria makes sense. The lighting is good. We're going to put these up. I think we need the space to do that, and we can use a long wall.
Okay.
We haven't used the cafeteria yet. It's nothing like sitting on those benches.
That'll teach them. Can we crank the heat way up?
Maybe up, anyway.
Between now and then, too, the video that was made for this tour of the school, has that been airing?
Oh, it's been airing, it was on, it's on every afternoon at 3:00, and it's also on prior to meetings. So he's doubled the.
So it's on every day, every day at 3:00, and then prior to?
Meetings. When did you, what time did you see it?
School board meetings, or?
When did I leave your office? I came back on the tour about 12:30, so about 1:30. Yeah, it was around 3:00, I'm sorry. Yeah, 2:30, 3:00. It must also be on late at night, because my students saw it after graduation, because I've had several comments this week about it.
If there's a way that we can maybe boost that airing between now and then, too, it's just another way for folks to get a good.
You can't get enough Debbie Brooks on TV.
That's true.
Okay. It's now 9:25. We've got a running, roughly an hour behind. I just want to kind of, in the interest of time, move us along a bit.
Do we want to ask, do we want to ask Dan if he's available to?
Well, we can.
I think it'd be helpful if Dan was there to answer.
I can answer technical questions and.
That'd be wonderful, Dan, if you were available for that.
What time?
It should be a 7:00 meeting, public hearing on a new school.
On the school facility committee recommendation.
To build a new school, among other things. Chet, you want to move along to the policy committee here?
All of that, Chad. Last time we read and accepted the policy, and we wanted to rework the procedure. So I'll just read the procedure. Attendance policy, students' procedure. Students are expected to be in school in the next scheduled classes when school is in session. If a student is absent or tardy on a given day, parents, babysitters, and so forth ought to call the appropriate school office to report this absence and the reason for it. If the school is not notified of the absence, the school shall make every attempt to contact the parent and or guardian. All absences will be characterized as excused or unexcused, enabling the student to make up work missed due to absences and to receive credit for such work. Students suspended out of school receive a zero for all classes. Make-up work for unexcused absences will be allowed, but no credit given. The principal shall make a determination on the status of all absences in accordance with the following. Excused absences, absences due to illness, doctor's appointment, family emergencies, special appointments, school-sponsored activities or obligations which cannot be met at another time. If a student knows in advance he or she will be absent, it is incumbent to contact each teacher's class. They will miss in order to obtain the future assignments. Students tardy to class must receive a mitt slip from the principal's office prior to entering the class. All absences from class will count towards the class absence limits set by the school's absentee policy. Exceptions to this procedure can be reviewed by the building principal.
Do I hear a motion that we accept this revision procedure?
So moved.
I have a very minor change I'd like to propose.
Why don't we have a second, and then we'll discuss.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Thank you. Funny you knew that.
Move the question.
Just a minor edit, which might just change tone a bit. At the end of the second paragraph, the sentence reads, "Make-up work for unexcused absences will be allowed, but no credit given." I'd like to change "allowed" to "encouraged."
I have any problem with that?
Just to give more encouragement to.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Encouraged instead.
Make-up work for unexcused absences will be encouraged?
So in other words?
Oh, make-up, okay. Your make-up work to be announced, so to speak.
Right.
Okay.
Well, with this amendment, can we, do we need another motion on this, or can we just accept this as amended?
As amended.
All in favor of this motion as amended? Aye. Great. The Seacoast Learning Collaborative Report, Linda, you want to say a little bit about
Very brief, as I didn't bring my notes with me. Gosh, we met, it was the end of May, and the Seacoast Learning Collaborative is a school for children with emotional, behavioral handicaps. And we have, at the present, seven students or five?
From Newmarket.
From Newmarket that attend?
I think we only have three students.
Oh, okay. Three students from Newmarket who attend. At our last meeting, we discussed the budget for the year, and for the first time in a long time, we were actually in the black, so that was great. Other things that we discussed at the meeting, SLC is going to, we're thinking about using their buses to provide transportation to some of the, some of the schools that participate in SLC for things like field trips. in SLC for things like field trips, you know, just any, any transportation needs that some of these towns may have, as a way of generating revenue for SLC. We also are going to try to hold some open houses, so if anyone on this board is interested in going and seeing the SLC and what they do, what their programs are about, I will keep you informed of when those open houses will be. That's about it, in a nutshell.
Thank you. Do we have some resignations?
There are none.
And nominations?
I have some, I left a packet in front of you this evening, as you know, this is recruiting season, so I'm very pleased to place the name of Ruth Hawkinson for the grade seven math position at the Newmarket Junior Senior High School for the 2005-2006 school year.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept that nomination for that position.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I see elementary teacher certification, but this is a grade seven position, I guess I'm, am I missing something? Does she have the certifications necessary?
Yes.
Okay.
She currently holds a elementary certification, but she has enough credits to get her certification via the New Hampshire Department of Ed, I've already talked with her about that, that's absolutely critical.
Yes, that's right.
Absolutely.
Why I bring it up?
She is eligible for certification.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to place the name of Ms. Mahalik in nomination for the language arts position at the junior senior high school, this would be a, Debbie Dantilio was grade 10th? It's 10th grade, English, is it?
Be-
Well, you know, they, they fluctuate, so it's, it's grade 10, 11, she, they teach, you know, they don't teach, sometimes they don't teach just one grade level. Deborah has resigned, as you know, so I'm pleased to nominate Ms. Mahalik for that position.
I like that.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination of Ms. Mahalik as a language arts teacher.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please to place the name of Ms. Stephanie King, nomination for grade 10, English position, replacing Jack Brown.
Do I hear a motion here?
I'll make a motion to nominate Stephanie King, position as described.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have four, five paraprofessional positions, I'd like to place the name of David Littlefield, nomination for teaching assistant position at the junior senior high school.
You want to do these individually?
Do you want me to do them individually, or would you like me to do them all together?
Okay.
I'd also like to place the name of Ian Kane for nomination for teaching assistant position at the junior senior high school, and, and on your sheets, you'll see who they're replacing, these are not new positions. I'd also like to place the name of Linda Zanowski, teaching assistant at the Newmarket Junior Senior High School, Sheri Mashad, teaching assistant at the junior senior high school, and Joyce Bradway, teaching assistant at the Newmarket Junior Senior High School.
I'd like to make a motion to accept all of the teaching assistants' nominations as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We do have one more I'd like to, for the fall coaching position for varsity coach at the high school, boys varsity soccer coach, Mr. Chris Morrell.
Move that, move the, to accept the nomination of Chris Morrell as boys varsity soccer coach.
Do I have a second?
Sure, I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Chris, I think, was voted national gym teacher of the year three, four years ago, and I think he's also the New Hampshire coach for the Olympic soccer, Olympic Development Program for Soccer, and I think we're extremely lucky and fortunate to have him as our soccer coach, great guy, good teacher.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can we have a, some business update?
Sure, budget update, I really don't have anything different, other than what I reported last time we met, we're winding down, and it looks like we'll be close to where we expected at the end of the year, no surprises, it's about in on the budget. Firehouse?
I have received word from the town council that they are not interested in purchasing the firehouse, and I believe that that would give you the final go-ahead to make a decision in terms of what you want to do with that piece of real estate. The town council did ask for some consideration from you to cover the costs of heating and maintenance or so forth that was done during, that money was expended over the winter for that firehouse, and I told them that I would be, bring that to you, your attention. So, I would like you to give us some direction relative to the sale of that facility.
Well, let's, let's open that for some, some discussion.
Let's sell it.
There you go, do you want to set a price? How do you want to proceed?
That's really the question.
I mean, I would like you to consider best offer, I mean, I know that we have an appraisal, it's a, it's a, it's in a prime location, it's in a location that I believe will be very vibrant when downtown revitalization is completed, and I think that it would be in, in your best interest, in the school district's best interest, that you see what you can get before you set a price. I, I think that we have a fairly good idea about what the value is, and I, I think we should put it out there and see what we can get for the district.
So basically just accept bids.
You don't want to set a minimum?
I think we should set a minimum.
Reserve price?
Yes, we should set a minimum, I, I do, I do believe that, but I don't think we should settle.
So, is what you're suggesting, Kathy, that we engage a broker on this, or we sell it ourselves, what, what is your, what's your thinking in that?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a real estate agent that has expressed a desire to step up and use her expertise to help the community, she came to our forums on the school facility, and I'd like to be able to contact her and see if she couldn't assist us. Obviously, there's a lot of real estate stuff that's done in terms of selling that Susan and I do not have our real estate license, and I believe that this woman would do this as, sharing her expertise as a community member, she, she-
As a community service.
Yes, yes, and she indicated that to Chris and I in an email earlier in the, during the winter.
Can, can we get a motion to put this on the market and empower Kathy Murphy to engage appropriate resources to, to put it on the market?
I'm confused about this reserve price thing now, what are you looking for from us in terms of the reserve price?
Well, I, I, what did you say, reserve price?
That's just what I call it, you know, when you, when you go to auction off a, a piece of art-
Minimum price, is it?
But a minimum price, they call it the reserve price.
Yeah, yeah.
What was the, what was the value?
You know, if you put a piece of property on the market, you don't have to put a reserve price on it unless you're auctioning it.
I understand, but she has said that, this is the term I use.
Yeah.
But you, you said that you want to put a, a minimum price on.
Well, if we do bids, I, I would, I would feel accepting something under the value of it would, would not be in the best interest of the district.
Of course.
If somebody gave us a bid of $100, obviously-
All I'm asking you is, are you asking for a motion that says-
I would like a motion.
-we authorize you to sell the building for a price not less than-
Yes, yes, that would give us, that would give us very clear direction.
Than, than the appraised value, but, but I think what, what we're talking about here is to start a process that the ultimate sale and the ultimate price will be something that the board would need to approve.
That's fine, someone, someone tell me what motion we need to make.
Okay. That's all I need.
What was, what was the value, what was the latest valuation?
The latest appraisal for that facility was $250,000.
Did you have a lawyer?
What, what you, what you do is, we make a motion, somebody might make a motion authorizing Kathy Murphy to put, to engage resources to put this piece of real estate on the market.
For a price-
To accept, and to accept bids-
To accept bids not less than the appraised value.
Of $250,000.
Did you get that?
Okay.
Maybe you want to say it again so she can get it, and then, once you say it, I will move it.
Okay.
Not less than the appraised value.
Not less than the appraised value, we're authorizing her to put it on the market and accept bids for not less than the appraised value.
Are you obligated to sell that?
No, we're not obligated to sell under any conditions.
We don't got too many lawyers.
You know, it's, you put it on the market, people want to put it under P&amp;S, but, but that purchase and sale agreement, where we agree to a fixed price, is not something that Kathy can sign, she can put it on the market, bring in the bids, but the school board has to be involved in signing-
Right.
-that purchase and sale agreement.
We have to specifically authorize her to do it.
Exactly.
She's not authorized at this point.
Which means we got to know the money-
Right.
-before we can do that.
Right.
Do you want a list of appraised value?
It's, it is $250,000 at this point in time, but that certainly is not necessary for the, putting it on the market, and it's also not necessary for this motion.
What, what do we have to pay taxes on at $250,000?
We don't, we don't pay taxes on anything.
We're nonprofit, we're nonprofit with a ID number.
So, do we have a, do we have a motion here?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, as to the second half of this issue, where the town would like us to-
Well, I would, I would advise you that I would be happy to sit with the town administrator and review any costs that have been incurred at that building, since the building was technically vacated in November, so I, I would be happy to negotiate a, a cost with the town manager.
And I, I would, I would appreciate your-
Allow me to do that.
Your taking that, and, and please also take under advisement that, that, you know, I know the town has been very concerned about parking, and has wanted the opportunity to assess whether or not it wished to purchase this property or not, and that we have, to some measure, been awaiting the town's movement on that issue during this period.
The other thing to bear in mind is, going way back, that the town is concerned that not be, that we do our best to sell it to someone who envisions a commercial use and not a residential use, although it's hard to imagine a residential use, but envisions a commercial use for the property, not a residential use, so.
Did I share with you the ad that I had originally prepared for that? I think that was all in there.
I think you did, but I've completely forgotten it.
That's what we probably will do, and run it by someone, it's been by the attorney, so.
Largely, sorry, the, some of the interest the town has had with that property is with helping to alleviate the pro, the parking during the construction downtown, is there something we want to, to approach the town about as far as use of that park, that property for parking in the meantime before it's sold, or do we not want to go there?
It's already done.
Okay.
It's already done, they already have permission to use it for parking, yeah.
Never mind.
Until such time that the property's sold.
That was James's idea.
And, and that's also been part of the swap on the insurance and maintenance, so the idea that they are looking for a whole lot coming back around there is of some question of interest.
I will meet with Mr. Dixon.
Yes. Bus contract.
Yes, you have a bus contract in your packet, all I need is a signature, as you know, we, you approved this, we reviewed the contract, we redate, we, we dated it, if you will, and I just need one page, one signature page, so that I can include that, so that's why it was in there.
How can we have to sign this, we can't authorize you to sign this?
Well, it's traditionally been that, done that way, and that was the way the contract came to us from, for a student, so I just continued that, and I think in the future, when we do another, we really don't need to do that, but-
In the future, we just authorize you to sign it, right.
Right, but it came over that way, so. And that's all on the bus contract.
Before you sign it, make sure you read the personal guarantee section of the contract.
I'm going to let our attorney take care of that.
It has been-
On that side of this thing.
It has been passed by the attorney.
Yes, that contract was passed by our attorney, and so I know that-
The school's attorney, not my personal attorney.
That's correct, Mr. Hawkins.
Do we have a manifest?
One, one more item under business.
Oh, yes.
Insurance bid, I neglected to include that on the agenda, I think you have in front of you the results of that contract with Primex ends July 1st, it's a five-year term.
This is the property and liability one?
This is property and liability, also includes workers' compensation and unemployment. You can see who we sent the bids out to, we had two responses, local government center, formerly NHMA, and Primex. Couple of the other companies that inquired about it did respond, and said that they were unable to secure anyone to bid on it at this time, so, it's a tough market, insurance.
And so, your recommendation on this?
Would be to stay with Primex, as you can see, property and liability are pretty close, they are package deals, so you couldn't pick one for one and one for the other, but obviously the workers' compensation is quite a bit lower with Primex. I did check the coverages, they're comparable.
So, is this, is the insurance bid also, it's one that requires a, a board vote on this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, can I get a motion on, on this insurance bid?
Motion to accept the Primex insurance bid for property liability and workers' compensation insurance as outlined in the letter of June 3, 2005.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the manifests in the amount of $479,457.14.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, action items. Let's see, where are we, the school handbook coming up? Review of district goals, is there anything folks want to add to this or discuss on action items? Okay, moving right along, how about the calendar?
We just want to add our June 30th.
That's at 7:00?
7:00. Isn't it the tradition that the newest member of the school bar brings pizza to- Isn't it the tradition that the newest member of the school board brings pizza to, uh...
Do we know? We're having it at the high school.
Okay.
I didn't hear a motion.
Moving right along.
All is in favor?
Any other comments on this? Things we need to add to it, changes?
Last day for all students.
Okay. Are we, there's some other handouts here that we haven't talked about that you wanna, you wanna say anything about?
Oh, just, uh, these are really just FYI kinds of things that were in your packets this week. We got a letter from the Lamprey Healthcare School-Based Dental Program, just to give you an idea of the service that's provided to our students. I also put a copy of the response, um, that, um, we sent out to Mrs. Rosa regarding prayer at graduation, just for your review. We talked about it at the last meeting. I also enclosed, just again for your information, uh, which was really, really nice. It was a scholastic, uh, scholar-leader awards that were given at the state level for, at, for the NELMs, which is New England League of Middle Schools, and our middle school belongs to the league, and two of our students were, um, honored for their leadership and their scholarship at an evening. The parents attended. I guess it was quite a night, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. If you look at the, um, I enclosed the brochure, did you see that?
Yes.
For the, the agenda for the night. The two students were, and, and these names should, uh, resonate with you, Laura Hackney and James Rosa. Both of those students serve on, have been serving on our facilities committee, and, again, both of them were honored that evening for their scholarship and their leadership. Also enclosed the National Honor Society, um, program. Again, that was a terrific evening where we had a chance to celebrate, um, students whose acadu- academic achievement has been extraordinary. And as always, your annual call for resolutions from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Uh, you did have a resolution last year, as you recall, on health insurance. I, I put it in your packets, didn't know if perhaps you had something that you wanted to call for resolution. You can think about it, you can let me know, we can send something. Your pleasure, I guess, on that one.
Well, it's, it's, uh, mostly as, as, um, a, a point of information, last year, New Market proposed a resolution regarding our, uh, out-of-control healthcare costs, uh, not only as it affects, uh, people who acquire their healthcare through what the district purchases, but the fact that this was an area that we as a society and our legislators did not appear to be stepping up the plate to develop adequate controls around it, so it was something that we called for the retention of the, uh, School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, and it was, uh, accepted and passed, as I recall.
One of the few.
One of the few.
One of the few. And I would, uh, rather than, it's, it is a little bit late this, this evening to try to craft something on this, I would ask people to think about issues that affect our schools that we want to once again bring to the attention of this assembly through our, our delegate. I guess, Chris, you're, are you our representative this year?
That's me.
Yeah. The healthcare issue was one that was, and, and that I think continues to be very important to us, as does, uh, school funding, right along, and there are several resolutions regarding that, that, uh, that are coming up. Uh, and I think it behooves us to weigh in on some of these issues, uh, to try to make the concerns of the school districts known to this group.
Why don't we just resubmit the health insurance thing?
Uh, that's something I would certainly be comfortable with. How do others feel about that?
I think so.
Okay.
I think school funding...
Let me to put that together, then, and just resubmit it?
Resubmit it.
And if folks have other issues that they wanna weigh in on, maybe we can, uh, uh, bring it up by our next school board meeting? Does that seem okay? Great.
Well, we hit, the deadline is July eighth.
Oh.
July eighth.
Well, we were, we were a bit tardy last year, and they still accepted it. I called them, and they were more than willing to do that, so if we wanted to do, uh, I'll put that on the agenda for the July fourteenth meeting, and, and they were very good about, they realized summer schedules.
Make it a little harder. It says that they distributed thirty days in advance, and they're shooting for something in, uh, in November, so I think that if we submit something in the July, we might have a, a chance of...
That meeting is a lot of fun. You talk about, they do not mess around. They blast right through that agenda. It's unbelievable.
That they do.
Okay, are there any, uh, any, uh, anything else before we, we go for, uh, non-public session?
Do we need a non-public?
Yeah. For the purpose of personnel matters. Uh, do we have the non-public card, RSA?
I put it right in front of you.
Usually, we just go into a non-public to talk about James, but... It's just our excuse to get him out of the room.
Sorry.
Why don't you propose a non-public session in accordance with RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Is the screen still on?
The screen is still on, and, but it is now off. Okay. Thank you so much.
Congratulations again, James, for a wonderful academic year.
He's following my example.
Hey, and some good, awesome baseball this year, you guys.
And some baseball and...
It was a blast. That camp, the seminar, though, that was hot up there.
Yeah.
When did you do it, last weekend?
Yeah.
Next year, you should have a pretty...